I'd like to call to order the December 19th, 2022 County Commission Meeting to Order. Thank you for all of our guests being here tonight, for whatever reason you're here for. We invite you to come back any opportunity that you can to be a part of the commission meeting. Tonight, I'll introduce Commissioner Justin Smith for our prayer and pledge. Again, if you're here for the rezoning, be sure that you print your name. If you'd like to speak, your name will need to be on there for you to have that opportunity. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Good evening, Commissioners. Good evening to our audience as well. I want to thank you for guys, for each and every one of you being here. I know it takes a lot of time to come, to come here and be, you know, take time out of your schedule to be a part of this meeting. And I know that there are some things that we talk about that you're very passionate about. So I want to thank you and your family. I know that during, you know, the month of December, it's during Christmas, we're always going, and we're traveling, we're shopping, and unfortunately, we're here tonight. So I want to thank each and every one of you for being here. Before I get started, I'd like to introduce a couple of my guests. Real quick, I'd like to say thank you for Mr. Finn, if you would. Would you come meet me up here at the podium? And if you look to the screen, Mr. Finn, he's an awesome guy. He loves our veterans. He's, he is, he goes to Friendship Christian. He's, he has good grades. He loves our veterans, right? What do you want to, tell me what you want to do whenever you, when you, when you get out of school?
When I get out of school, I want to go to the Army.
Yes, he wants to go to the military. He has a heart for the veterans. Let me tell you, when this guy's not dressed like this, he is wearing like some camouflage all the time. So it's pretty awesome. So, but also, I'd like to introduce, my next one is going to be my, my dear pastor, which is, he's Commissioner. It's Brother Glenn Denton. I've been able to sit under his preaching for many years at Hillcrest Baptist Church. He's helped change my life. He's actually spoke into my life, and I'm going to ask him to lead us in our prayer. And if you, everybody would, if you would, please rise, and I'll allow him to do that for us tonight.
Heavenly Father, we thank you tonight for this blessed privilege and honor just to be alive today, breathe the air you give us, and to take the opportunities you put before us. I pray, God, for every man and woman, boy and girl here tonight, that you might, God, not give us the spirit of fear, but of power and of love and a sound mind, and that we not be ashamed of the gospel of Christ for the power of God, the salvation. And Lord, we thank you for this time of year, and God, that we set it aside to mean something that sometimes we forget. God, I'm glad you made an announcement to the lowest of low so he could lift them to the highest of high. The poor shepherds, when he said one day, "Born to you is born this day in the city of David, a Savior, which is Christ the Lord." So thank you for coming to be our Savior and to save us from our sins. Thank you for coming as Christ, the Anointed One, the One we've been waiting for, and now we wait for you to come again. And then, Lord, most of all, we thank you for being our precious Lord, Lord of all, King of kings and Lord of lords, and may we bow before your will tonight, and may we reverence you in all that we do. Give us wisdom, for in our flesh we can do nothing but wrong, but God, in the Spirit, we can do nothing but right. So help us tonight, to be sensitive to you. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen. And also, I want to thank the ladies and gentlemen that's at home. I know that the ones that are tuned in, I know that you're taking time out of your family, your kids, and you're, you're taking time to, like, to invest yourself into us, your government. So thank you again for, for taking time out tonight to be able to be a part of us tonight. Mr. Finn, you ready to do the pledge?
Yes.
All right. Come on over here and help lead us in the pledge. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Awesome. Before we, before we quit, he's, he's got one more thing for us. You ready? All right, go ahead.
We, the people, in order to form a perfect union, establish justice and journalistic trinity, provide for the common event, and promote the general wa- welfare, so, here is justice for the liberty, we for ourselves and our posterity, to attain and establish this constitution for the United States of America.
All right. Thank you, sir. Me personally, I want to wish each and every one of you a Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Pastor, and thank you, Mr. Finn. He actually came to my office maybe a little over a year ago, and he sang that to me. So he is a very talented young man, and we sprung that on him tonight. But we do appreciate him doing that and bringing a reverence to what we're here for tonight. This time, if you will, press yes on your panel to record your presence to tonight's meeting. Are we good? Twenty-three present, twenty-three present, two absent. I'll move the report of the steering committee. Commissioner Fields?
Steering Committee, the County Commission met in regular session on Thursday, December the 8th, 2022, in the upstairs conference room. The minutes of the meeting are in your packet. I move that they be accepted and filed.
Got a motion, a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Adoption of the agenda?
I move that we adopt the agenda.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And consent agenda, Commissioner Fields?
You have a copy of the consent agenda in your packet. I move that it be accepted and filed.
Got a motion, a second, need to vote on it, Mayor, because we got, so I'll need to get you to vote for. If you're voting for the consent agenda, please press yes. You ready to vote? Mr. Kurtz? All hearts and minds good, will you vote? Please record.
Twenty-three yes, two.
Twenty-three yes, two absent, resolution passes. This time, we'll have our historical moment by Commissioner Jerry McFarland, county historian.
Thank you, Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the Commission, and friends and neighbors that are out there. It's impressive to see a young man like Finn stand up and, and stand up for his country, and I appreciate that. And I wish you the best in military service when you get there. Going to talk about military service, I was asked by, I was asked by one of the Commissioners, historian noted, and, and from the western part of the county. I'm not going to mention Diane Weathers' name, but she asked me to please do the David Wilson presentation one more time with some modifications. David Wilson is which this county is named for. So let us just run through some slides up here. He was actually born in Pennsylvania, moved down to North Carolina. And with that, let me stop a moment and say, did you know that North Carolina went from the Atlantic Ocean to the Mississippi River? That was before Tennessee was here. It was all North Carolina. Married in North Carolina, farmed, and he was there in Mecklenburg County and represented that in the, in the Cottle Creek area. That's all listed on your slides that you may see. He was involved in, in a lot of things in there politically, and I'm going to try to jump over some of these things. But one of the things I want to call your attention to is, I believe, the last of these slides, and I was next to the last, is there were three migrations. And the first one was where the long hunters and the settlers came over the mountains and settled primarily in Upper East Tennessee, Green County and Sevier County and up in there. The second migration was where people that served in the Revolutionary War from North Carolina were given grants to come into Middle Tennessee. It was called the Miro District, and that was in, in and around Nashville, and it was Davison County. And he was given a land grant on the Duck River, and that's outside the Miro District. And there was a lot of that done. As you more you research, you find that there was more mistakes made by the North Carolina Commission on land grants. And when you look in Jack Masters' book on the settling of the Cumberland, you find out that probably only thirty, maybe forty percent of those people ever came here. They sold the land grant and remained east of the mountains, if you will. But David Wilson did come here, and he wound up settling in, in Sumner County. And the research I got said he, at one time, he owned ten thousand three hundred and twenty-five acres. He also had a, a station there, and that would be a tavern, a place you could stay overnight and get something to eat, if you will. He was a member of the House of Commons of North Carolina, represented Sumner County, and died in about 1803. But let me share something with you. You have a chart there that shows the Miro District and Davison County. Sumner County was a huge, huge county that split off Davison County. Miro, this is crazy. Miro was a governor of Louisiana. How in the world did North Carolina name this district, this military district, to which they're going to give grants for payment services rendered during the Revolutionary War after a governor of Louisiana? There's a lot of crazy things in our history, if you will. But Sumner County, as you can see there, took in Sumner, Trousdale, Macon, Jackson, Wilson, and others in that particular day. But there was a problem. Our state became a state in 1796. It's on the, the seal of our great state. And Wilson County had a problem. If I sold you a piece of land, or you sold a tract of land to somebody else, you had to go to the county seat to register that tract of land. The county seat was across the Cumberland River. Seven months out of a year, you could not cross the Cumberland River without fear of drowning, because it was high and it was swift, and only during certain times of year could you get over there. So, two hundred men, so the story goes, two hundred men south of the river petitioned the legislature in 1799, "Let us have our own county south of the river." And that petition is in your packet right here. And they asked a guy to take this to the legislature, which that time was a meeting in Knoxville, Tennessee, and they asked David Wilson's son to carry this petition to the legislature in Knoxville. And I don't know whether that's Hokey or what there, but how did he come up with his dad's name is Wilson County? I do not know, but it was, it was deemed that that would be the name of the county in 1799. Now, when you get home, Commissioner, you look at these names and these signatures, because those two hundred men looked to me like about hundred and twenty, maybe. There's some similar handwriting on different names there, if you will. So if any of you guys are handwriting specialists, I challenge you to look at them and see. But at any rate, we became a county in 1799, and that's a history moment of December.
Thank you, Commissioner McFarland. We always enjoy those moments that you give us. This time, I'd like to ask Sarah Davenport, that works in our office. And Sarah does a tremendous job with many things for you Commissioners. I know you know that, and she always plans what you see on the screen here. But another one of her good projects was working with all the high schools. And Director Luttrell, would you come forth as well? And with that, she started a program that if you were, go to pay your taxes at the trustee's office, and we encourage you to do that, that you'll see along that wall, six different plaques of artwork that was given by the high schools. And Sarah, tell them a little bit about the program. And then, if you're in the audience and you're here about this program, if you're a winner tonight, would you please make your way to the front as well? All of my winners, all of my art people, Avery, all of you guys, please, ladies.
Thank you, Mayor Hutto. Let me start by saying I am grateful for this podium tonight, because you cannot see my knees shaking. I did not know that I was going to be doing this until the last minute. So I don't know whose idea this was, but you are my hero. Thank you. Yes, as Mayor Hutto said, this is a program that we have done for a while, and I really enjoy being a part of it. We honor our athletes, we honor band members, we honor so many people in our school system, which is wonderful, and I think they are worthy of praise, and we should do that. But we also need to honor these artists. If you have not been downstairs and seen the artwork that is gracing the hallways, you're missing out. You want to talk about talent, Wilson County's got it. And we know that these are not the only ones that we have. But I'm very honored to be able to stand here with these young ladies tonight, and, and thank you. Thank you for sharing your talent with us tonight and allowing it to be in our hallways for a period of time. So we wanted to recognize you tonight, and we also have an award for you that Mr. Luttrell is going to hand out. And I may not have everyone here, but I am going to recognize everyone who's here. From Green Hill High School, we have Ms. Corabel Beasley. I'm not sure if Ms. Corabel is here tonight. Ms. Corabel, okay, thank you, Ms. Corabel. From the Barry Tatum Virtual Academy, Ms. Christine Fossey. And that was a new one that we were able to add this year because of COVID. That was one of the reasons that we hadn't been able to do artwork for a couple of years, and also because we had a new high school. So we were glad to be able to add both of those this year. So we have Ms. Christine From Wilson Central High School, Ms. Laney Hitt. I don't think Ms. Laney is here tonight, but we do appreciate Ms. Laney and her contribution. Watertown High School, Ms. Bailey Cabbage. Mount Juliet High School, Ms. Grecia Ajnor, and I apologize if I mispronounce the name. I don't believe Ms. Grecia is able to be here with us tonight. And from Lebanon High School, Ms. Avery Gill. Thank you, ladies, so much. We're really appreciative of you sharing this artwork with us. It will be on display, as Mayor Hutto said, outside of the trustee's office for about the next year. So it takes some time to go down there and see it. You're also going to see it in the next few weeks in the newspapers and on social media. We want to make this a big deal for you guys and really encourage your talent, as you do. Awesome.
Thank you, Ms. Davenport. And the teachers that are here and the parents, if you'd like to go down and make pictures at this time, Sarah will escort you down that way if you would like to be a part of that. Thank you again, Director Luttrell, for also sharing this with us. Commissioner Marlowe, would you come and take my place for just a moment, please? Just a second. I won't make a statement. I won't make a statement. I would ask for Ms. Diane Major and her family to come up, please. As Ms. Diane makes her way to the podium, it's a night to honor her. I don't know how many Yellowstone fans I have in the crowd. But Ms. Diane would have been an excellent candidate back in the day. I don't know if she's Beth or not. But if you get on her bad side, and I have been on that side before, she could be there. But no, she understands the agricultural part of Wilson County, which is a huge part for us here. Many of you here tonight are on that same wavelength, and I understand that. But she has fought for the farmers and the landowners in our county for twenty-six years plus. And I'm here to honor her because it's her time to retire and take on a different chapter in her life. And so I want to read this resolution in honor of her. Whereas Ms. Diane Major has served Wilson County for twenty-six years as the Administrative Assistant for Wilson County Soil Conservation District. It may say Administrative Assistant. Let me tell you, that's just a title, because that is not the truth. She would be the director there. Not, not to take anything away from Ms. Kristy Luna, which I know is here as well and does a fantastic job, but she acts as an island out there on her own, and I appreciate her so much. But she represents the landowners and the youth of Wilson County. Whereas while in this role, Ms. Diane has made her mark on agricultural community through her involvement in countless projects all geared toward preserving the farmer's way of life. Whereas the Murfreesboro native made Wilson County her home in 1976 after marrying her husband, Mr. Roy Major, the Union produced three sons, Josh, Seth, and Jared, two grandchildren, Carter and Addison, who all enjoy an active role working in their family farm, the Major Dairy Farm, located in central Wilson County. Whereas Diane's love, Ms. Diane's love for agriculture has given her opportunities to be involved with the county's youth, who share the same passion. She has worked with numerous 4H judging, judging teams over the years, several of whom went on to win national competitions. Ms. Diane also planned and organized the Farm Day event for the second graders, students of Wilson County schools for the past twenty years. They come out to the fairgrounds and learn that milk doesn't come from Kroger, and many other things. And it is a great feat in itself, but for twenty years, that is a great accomplishment, and definitely an education for a lot of young people that will never forget that day that they spend at the Ag Center. She was a major role player in organizing the board responsible for establishing the Wilson County Ag Hall of Fame, a recognition program that honors Wilson County farmers for approximately fifteen years. Again, another milestone. If you have a chance and you go to the expo, if you look there, she took care of a, a, a large showcase that highlights all of our farmers and things that have happened there. Again, another great feat. Ms. Diane also served for many years as a livestock chairman of the Tennessee State Wilson County Fair Dairy Show. She has worked timeless and tireless volunteer hours to ensure that all the livestock shows run smoothly during the fair. Again, no easy feat. After twenty-six years of dedicated service, Ms. Diane is ready to start a new chapter in her life and retires as Soil Conservation Leader. Her future plans include sitting on the porch swing and enjoying the view, a worthy goal after twenty-six years of service. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, that we hereby honor Ms. Diane Major for her service as the Wilson County Soil Conservation District Leader, and congratulate her on a well-deserved retirement. Please help me congratulate Ms. Diane.
I'm very emotional, so I don't speak very well, even when I'm not emotional. But when I started my job, Ms. Beth Akox's dad hired me on, and we had one small room here in the courthouse downstairs at that level. And, but, but things were already in the making to, to get us a fine agricultural building, a building that would house all the agencies that were important to the farmers in our county, and that would be large enough to pull a truck and a trailer around the building, because that became a real problem here in, here in this parking lot. And so I, I hope most of you do know where the Neo Agricultural Building is located, in the Bedore Parkway, right in front of the Ag Center there, the Ward Ag Center. And that's where we've, where I've been every since, ever since then, working with the people that I've worked with. It's, it's, it's been a great honor, and I'm going to miss all of them. They have just made, they have just made my day to see them come in and for us to work together. And I hope, hope you all know that, you know, if you eat, you're part of agriculture, and that you'll remember the farmers, and that you'll remember that their farm is their life. And, and just always remember, there's a lot of them out there that are, that are losing, losing land. And, you know, think about them and remember them when you make your judgments.
Take a motion to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ms. Diane is a version of, for sure, a true American, and we thank her for her dedication to Wilson County, but also to the farmers of this county as well. Those of you that need to know the inside joke, Mr. Marlowe came up last month to do that, and he slipped on the way down, and he's never lived it down since that time. At this time, we have another great opportunity to honor someone, and I'll introduce Commissioner Lauren Breeze for this one.
Good evening, everyone. If Kristy, Danielle, and Adam Hussaini could come join me at the podium. This is in honor of their Joe Ali, who was a, he gave a lot to this community. And we lost him earlier this fall. So excuse my emotions. He, he sat with us for a while. He served in so many different ways, and we miss him very much. Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee honoring Youssef Joe Ali Hussaini. Whereas Joe was a devoted public servant to the Wilson County and surrounding areas, having many notable accomplishments. And whereas Joe earned his degree from Tennessee State University in Architectural Engineering in 1991. And whereas Joe came to Wilson County in 1993 to work at the local Ford dealership, then Burchett Ford and now Bates Ford, where he worked as a salesman, climbing the ladder to finance manager, and then eventually general sales manager in his ten years of employment there. And whereas in 2003, Joe started his own successful business here in Wilson County, Auto Village. And whereas Auto Village was a leader in pre-owned vehicle sales in Wilson County and was voted best pre-owned dealership in Wilson County for the last five consecutive years. And whereas in the Leadership Wilson class of 2012, Joe led a group of classmates organizing an event to promote healthy activity, which led to those Wilson County High School students breaking a world record and having their names added to the Guinness Book of World Records for most people running one-hundred meters in a one-hour relay. Whereas Joe also served five years on the Wilson Division of Habitat for Humanity from 2012 to 2017, two of those as the Board Chairman, and three years as the Wilson County Representative on the Greater Nashville Habitat for Humanity Board. In his time on the Board, nearly twenty deserving families in need became homeowners. And whereas Joe was also a member of the Chamber of Commerce from 2006 to 2022, where he served in the Board of Directors in 2020 and 2021, he served in the Government Relations and Economic Development Divisions. And whereas in his time with the Chamber, his kindness showed through in many ways, through volunteering, serving on various boards, and even donating a vehicle to the Chamber of Commerce in 2011. And whereas while Joe wore many hats in his life, one of his most treasured accomplishments was serving as Wilson County Commissioner for District 17 from October of 2019 through September of 2020, serving on many committees. And whereas Joe lived a fulfilling life in which he loved to travel and support the Tennessee Titans. And whereas Joe is survived by his wife of twenty-six years, Kristy, and children Danielle and Adam Hussaini, and numerous other family members who loved him dearly. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, that we hereby honor and remember Youssef Joe Ali Hussaini for his many years of civic service to Lebanon and Wilson County, his commitment to government service, and for just being an all-around good guy.
Say aye.
Okay. Well, I told myself I wasn't going to get emotional. Here I am. I just want to say thank you, honestly. Here I go. I just want to say thank you. Thank you to Commissioner Breeze. Thank you to all of you. My dad loved all of you guys so, so much. You know, my dad, he bragged about his family, he bragged about his friends, and he bragged, he bragged about his community. And, you know, I think the mark that Joe Ali left on Wilson County will be around for a really long time. I think that's a, a true testament to the man that he was. I wish that he could be here to accept this today. But I know that he's smiling down, and he's probably like doing a little dance, really happy that people are still talking about him. So I really just want to say thank you so much. He loved all of you guys. He loved Wilson County. You know, his, his biggest accomplishments were what he did for his community. I know that when we were growing up, like, we couldn't even go to the fair without at least volunteering at the Habitat booth. We want to play with our friends, we had to go to the Habitat booth first. You know, I mean, it, it really showed how much that he cared about, cared about the community and cared about helping others. So I'm not going to talk all day, but I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you on behalf of my dad, on behalf of my family. We really, really appreciate it. So, thank you.
Spoke about the last recognition that we had, and Commissioner Ali was, no question, family to us. Commissioner Ali was a part of this community. Commissioner Ali was a great- Commissioner Ali was a great American as well. And probably my greatest asset from Commissioner Ali was, as I saw him face his health battle, with a smile on his face and determination to continue to live every day to its fullest. But he did care about Wilson County. He cared about every person that sits in his room that he worked with, and he never really saw a stranger. I thank you for giving him to his service to this county. I appreciate that so much. This time, we are gonna have a rezoning tonight. Before we go out of session, I do want to just make some comments. The rezoning tonight, before we do that, you have signed a sheet. I'll do my best to read your name correctly, the best that I can. We will ask you to step to the podium, state your name and address for the record once you get there. Ms. Doughty, you will be able to time this for me. You'll have three minutes to speak. You're allowed to speak one time. My question really is, or my statement really is, if somebody's already covered the material, don't restate what somebody else has already said, so we give the commissioners as much information as we can, as much new information as possible. Ask you, you're here to talk to the commission, so do not talk to anyone in the audience or direct any derogatory comments to someone else there. We ask you to be professional. We know that you hear here, and you wanna speak on this, and we wanna hear you. But we'd ask that you just keep it professional and direct to our commission. The commission will not respond. This is a public comment period. They will not answer your questions or respond. And then, once we close public comment period, we'll go back into session, and then we'll debate the conversation here among the commissioners. At that time, the public is not allowed to speak at that time, so just so you know, I know many of you don't get a chance to come to public hearings much, at least I didn't before I took this job, and so I'm just trying to set the ground rules for that. So, at this time, I'll hear a motion that we go out of session.
Motion, motion.
Second. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Okay. Mr. Tom, I'll turn it over to you.
Ladies and gentlemen, a public hearing will be held before the Wilson County Commission on Monday, December 19th, 2022, at 7:00 PM or thereafter, here in the County Commission Chambers at the County Courthouse, located at 228 East Main Street in Lebanon, Tennessee, to hear comments on the following application, which has been made by Joe Haddix of Civil Site Design Group on behalf of Developer Strategic Capital Partners LLC, with permission from property owner Robert Lanham, who has applied jointly requesting a land use plan amendment from high-density residential area to commercial center area and rezoning to the same, of the same property from R1 Rural Residential zoning to C4 planned commercial. The property is located at 2525 Lone Oak Road and contains approximately 60.74 acres. The property is further referenced as Wilson County Property Map 138, parcel 32.03. A copy of the request has been on file on the Wilson County Development Services Office, Planning Division, located in the basement here, Room 5 of the courthouse at 228 East Main Street, and has been available for inspection during regular business hours. The land use amendment and rezoning request will be heard on first and final reading by the County Commission following the public hearing. Anyone desiring to comment is requested to come forward at this time.
You're wishing to speak on the property, and the first one on my list is Mr. Joe Haddix. And before he speaks, Commissioner Smith, I missed your name on here. Do you have something? Okay. Sorry, I missed that. Yes, sir. Mr. Joe, and what I'd ask is that people state their name and address for the record, as I said earlier. Ms. Doughty, if you will not start the time that they have to speak until after they stated that, that will give them a full three minutes to talk.
Good evening. Joe Haddix, CSDG 2305 Klein Avenue. Appreciate everybody's time and letting me speak to y'all tonight about this project. As Mr. Rashir mentioned, we've taken a land use and rezoning request through your planning commission. Both items received a positive recommendation to move forward to this body. You know, this project in particular, we put a lot of effort into, we don't take these things lightly. I think over the past several months, in the past year, the rezonings in particular, some of the standards have, more and more information is going in on the front end, which I think is a great thing. So, a couple of things that we learned going through that process. As I mentioned, planning commission's recommending the land use change from high-density residential to a commercial center land use designation. Planning commission's recommending a rezone from R1 to C4, which would match up the property to the south. A lot of what we've heard in community meetings, previous meetings, is about flooding. Like I said, we put a lot of effort into evaluating the drainage space to the north that's coming down. Most of y'all, if you're on this end of the county, know that those, that curve floods. So, what we've come up with is a scheme to solve that by redirecting some of the water to the south end of the property, avoid the road, get it back to that natural conveyance And in that case, you know, we're also committing to, if you listened or read the planning commission minutes, we're committing to detain for the 100-year storm event, which exceeds your current county standards. So, in conjunction with the storm drainage improvements, plus over detaining on-site, we feel like we're really helping the flooding issue. You know, secondly, traffic. Lone Oak Road desperately needs to be improved across the front edge of the site and even further north. So, what the developer is committing to would be to improving Lone Oak Road down to about the first 90, where you'll see what, at this scale, it looks like a second entrance. So, one of the other things we've done is, all of our truck traffic or vehicle traffic of any kind will enter down on the south end, which is close to the Denso Building or Prologis Building. That's about 850 feet past their entrance on Lone Oak. So, trying to keep all that truck traffic on the south end. We've added a second entrance that will be gated, just in the off-chance a truck misses the entrance, it gives them somewhere to pull off and get into the site, someone can come open the gate for them, without that truck traffic continuing further north up towards Gladeville. You know, I mentioned the road improvements. I think most of y'all seen, county has standard road improvement at the entrances.
That is your time.
Yes. About 2,400 feet. Thank y'all.
And just for the record, the stuff that's on the screen was not a part of his presentation. That was on there by way of our planner, just so you'd have some, a reference to look at. I didn't want anybody to get confused that we were doing a slideshow for one and not for someone else. Next is Mr. Richard Holland. I said that right?
My name is Richard Holland. My wife, Alicia, and I live at 1429 Lone Oak Road. I'm not gonna go into the specifics about all the issues, everybody knows, but I have a, I offer a unique perspective. I work in logistics. My job is primarily dealing with truck routes. Lone Oak Road, 2525 Lone Oak Road is a known route. If you put in 2525 Lone Oak Road in a truck GPS, which is not the same as a car GPS, Lone Oak Road is a known track route, truck route, north, south, east, west. Trucks will come there regardless, because they're based on miles, not based on geographic location. They're based on miles. That warehouse is gonna be located approximately in a geographic location where its lease miles is Lone Oak Road. The next point I wanna make is warehouse decay. Warehouse decay is about 25 years. I know this because, again, I work in logistics. Warehouse is going to be, after about, excuse me, after about 25 years, they are going to decay, and they're going to want to go to subdividing warehouses, and the leases are gonna be up. That's really all I have to say, because the warehousing systems is going to affect everything on Lone Oak Road. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Go to Mr. Henry Lutz, if I got that right? If I didn't, please correct me.
Got it right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. How's everybody doing? Hope everyone's doing okay. I'm Henry Lutz, 2166 Lone Oak Road, Lone Oak Road. My concern is, I have a well, and three years ago, they dynamited across the interstate on that warehouse, and four months after they quit dynamiting, I noticed my well was, something was wrong. It was damaged. And I had three GPMs a minute, that was my refill on my well, 70 feet on my well to top it out, and it took eight hours. I checked it that day, it took eight hours for it to refill instead of 40 minutes. So, my other point is, I'm 500 feet off of the road, and if they did damage my well, would I have to have that grind with one of those rock grinders 500 feet, which would cost me probably over $10,000? I don't know if they'd do that, but I understand they would replace me a water tap, so I'm concerned about that. Plus, if they did sink my well, how long would I be without water? Back the years ago, Mr. Blessing, on the other end of the Lone Oak Road, he had a, they sunk his well, and he was right across the street from the dynamite and the well, the warehouse. So, my question, I don't want, I don't wanna hear all the dynamite, and you understand my concern about the water. And my prayer is Romans 8:28, "All things work together for good, to them that love God, to them that are called according to his purpose." And my prayer is that God will show us favor that they won't build a warehouse. And the other part of my prayer is that Mr. Lanham, God will show him favor, that he'll find a buyer for him to sell his property. And that's it. Thank you very much, everybody. Have a happy holiday. Appreciate it.
Thank you for that. Mr. Micah Forrest?
My name is Micah Forrest, 2700 Lone Oak Road. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. The results and consequences of this proposal would be, number one, immediate; number two, devastating; number three, far-reaching; number four, permanent; number five, dangerous; number six, irreversible. Personally, I and my family already experienced the direct results of bringing hundreds of tractor-trailers onto this narrow, unequipped, inadequate roadway system on a daily basis. We've had to reroute coming home and going to work, because another 18-wheeler has not been able to navigate the extremely narrow road system, not just on Lone Oak Road, but also Couchville Pike, South Mount Juliet Road. These roads are not equipped for tens of thousands of more 18-wheelers every year, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, all hours of the day and night. We have our law enforcement officers being forced to spend hours out there directing traffic for these accidents. This is gonna take an immediate safety issue. You can't even get a school bus and an automobile to pass each other on Lone Oak Road for the majority of it. Just yesterday, I had to pull over, or just Friday, I had to pull over into someone's driveway for two school buses to go around. And this, I just don't want people to wake up in six months from now saying, "What the heck happened? How did Gladeville turn into this disaster? This traffic disaster?" There, I wanna say that the citizens have consistently showed up to these meetings for the past two and a half years. We've made it very clear that we do not want these warehouses. This is a residential neighborhood. We moved here three years ago after our house burned in Rutherford County. Basically, what this proposal will do, it will devastate the peace and quiet. You're just gonna turn a neighborhood into an industrial work zone. I mean, I don't, you can use your own imagination about what you would think if your neighborhood just turned into a warehouse zone. I think that the ramifications would be irreversible. It would be, it would be something, like I said, once it's done, you can't just say, "Oh, well, this didn't work out. It's already done, it's too late." But I wanna thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. God bless you.
Thank you. Thank you for that. I have Ms. Carolyn Forrest?
My name is Carolyn Forrest. I live at 2700 Lone Oak Road, across the road from the 60 acres that are being considered for rezoning. There are over 100 homes on Lone Oak Road are in close proximity, and this includes two new subdivisions on the north end of the road, and these subdivisions have entrance and exit onto Lone Oak Road. There are many new houses still being in the process of being built. Many, if not most of them, are individually owned and occupied by individual families versus rental. And because most of us do own our homes, it would not be easy to pack up and move away from the problems that would be caused by this rezoning. I'm in agreement with the other concerns that have been raised today, including concern for property damage and the structure of our houses, the flooding, the blasting and the resulting noise, the bright lights, and the traffic. Within the past two months, I have seen an 18-wheeler go off in a ditch because of one of the narrow curves on Couchville Pike, and this holds up traffic for hours, meaning that people have to take very long detours in order to get to where they're going. Just remember that we, the people, are the lifeblood, the very heartbeat of Wilson County. We have chosen to live here. We live and work and have our being here. We are taxpayers and contributing citizens of this place called Wilson County. We go to and from our homes on a daily basis, whether we're retired or whether we're working citizens. We go about our lives, but at the end of the day, we come home to be with our families, and we enjoy the peace and the quiet environment of our neighborhood. To my knowledge, the 60 acres being considered for rezoning has not been listed for sale as a residential area within the past three years. There are no tracts of land that are being offered as an option for building homes. Ask yourselves, if this proposed zoning change was across the street from your house, would you want it? Would you vote for it, knowing how it would affect you and your family, and how it would bring changes that are permanent? Before his death, my husband was a college professor for 50 years, and he formerly taught here at Cumberland University. He taught marketing and economics, and it was a frequent topic in our household to talk about the economy, to talk about marketing, capitalism, and free enterprise. But when a choice has to be made between economic growth, such as building commercial warehouses in a residential neighborhood versus the people, we, the people, the residents of Wilson County should be given the first priority. Please consider our interest and our concerns, and how this will affect our homes, our very lives. Some of the changes and problems that will be created will be irreversible. You have been elected by the people and for the people to represent us, to support us, and to speak up for our concerns and needs. We've done what we know to do by getting out the word to our neighbors and going door to door. More importantly, we've prayed to our God, who alone is sovereign, and he is compassionate and mindful of our needs. He makes no mistakes. When all is said and done, the land belongs to him. We may own the titles to our individual properties, but he's only, he's only loaned it to us for a season. Our trust is in him and what he is going to do here today. Thank you for listening to us and acting on our behalf.
Thank you. You will please try to go by our time, so I don't get in trouble with those that I didn't give any extra time to. But thank you for your comments, Ms. Carolyn. I believe it's Nina and Robert. Have I got that right? Nana. Please correct me. Sorry.
I'm Bob Toomey. I'm at 2780 Lone Oak Road. I've been out there for 51 years. That road belonged to the people that own Whippa Will Farm. It's our right of way to get in and out of our property. The county had us sign from the center of the road, 25 feet. They had Wallace Lanham sign from the center of the road, 25 feet. The only trouble is, Wallace didn't own that property. We owned that property. I've talked to Bobby, and Bobby said that he'll be glad to go to his property line and go 25 feet over on his property, and I'll go 25 feet on my property. And I'm hoping this will be all right with everyone else.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Nana Toomey, and I live at 2780 Lone Oak Road. We moved here in... We moved here in 1971, fifty-two years ago. This community and its people have just really meant the world to us. And never in my life, looking back then, would I ever have suspected what has taken place in our community would have taken place, and all the changes that have been made here. We've put up with a whole lot of things out here, the water problems, the roads, just all kinds of things. But we loved it so much that we've weathered all the storms, and we wanted to stay and raise our family here. But we've, we've raised our children, and now we want our grandchildren to be able to enjoy the things that our children have experienced here. The great outdoors, the creeks that they play in, and all the wonderful, wonderful years that we have spent out here with our children and grandchildren. But the really sad fact is that our community has been turned into an industrial park, all up and down Couchville Pike. Buildings, concrete, traffic, and some seemingly unsavory people have taken the place of God's green earth. We have been able to hang on by a thread at being able to keep just a sliver of the countryside, just a sliver compared to what we have. And we don't want to lose that. And I hope that you will all consider that, and consider our hearts' desire and what we need to have to maintain, keep our standard and way of life that we have had all these years. And I have to ask you, do any of you care about us and our friends and neighbors? All I've heard is how this is going to be so wonderful for Wilson County. Well, what about Wilson County's people? What about us? I mean, y'all can vote for this warehouse, and it can be a done deal, and then you can get up and leave this place tonight and never look back. But you will be leaving us with all the repercussions and the devastation that this project will bring to us. We've already lived through this before with the warehouse on the corner. And every day, it was like, when the dynamite would go off, is this the day our house is going to be knocked off its foundation? It was a scary time. Not to mention all the other stuff that went along with it, the dirt, and the dust, and the noise, and the beep, beep, beeps. And so, I mean, right now, we're doing some extensive renovations on our home. And I have to ask ourselves, do we really want to put out this much money to renovate our home and just to sit on our front porch and watch tractor-trailers go back and forth? We don't want that. And, and we're just, we're angry, and we're sad, but most of all, we're just grieved. We're grieved by all this tonight. And you, you have it in your power to take away what we have left, or to allow us to keep it. So as I stand here tonight before you, I'm unshamingly begging you, please don't do that to us. Please.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is that it?
We got Mr. Donnie Rowley. Rowley? I think I said that right.
Allen, Donnie Dowlin.
My bad. Thought it was an R.
I'm Donnie Dowlin. I live at 3399 Underwood Road, so this definitely, this development would have an effect on me as well. At the recent Planning Commission meeting, our planning department, your planning department, our planning department recommended against this proposal, so I would hope you would consider that. There are mention of road improvements. The planning department has reservations about that, so I'd hope you would consider that. At that Planning Commission meeting, Mr. Lanham said, "I can't sell my property since I don't have access to sewer for residential homes." And we understand sewers for commercial only. I guess I don't understand that. Because two miles from him, two miles up Lone Oak from that property, as has been mentioned, there's a subdivision been built, another one been built, they're on the interstate, they use a step system. So that's, I guess I don't understand why a step system is not an opportunity, an option here on this property. Houses on Gladeville, on Gladeville Road, four, five hundred home subdivision, they're going to use a step system. So obviously, that's an option if, if it's pursued, unless the water sewer department, or the state, or the county, whoever had the say-so on that, has told him it is absolutely not possible. So a step system is possible for him, and so that is an option for him to sell his home for, or property for homes. So then it's about the money. It's always about the money. I understand that. And if I was Mr. Lanham, I'd be doing the same thing. I'd be asking you to rezone my property, so it'd be worth more money to me. And I'm quite sure if he lived where we live, he'd be talking about this, against this, just like we are. I'm sure some of you have known Mr. Lanham a long time, maybe went to school with him, to church with him, grew up with him, and maybe he wanted to do an old friend a favor. I understand that. But we're your constituents, not him. He lives in Sumner County. We are your constituents in Wilson County. So I'm quite sure if you lived where we are, as has been said, you'd be speaking against this. We're the ones that have to deal with it after all said and done, if it's, if it's rezoned. Many have spoke against this at the Planning Commission, and here tonight as well. Our local commissioner spoke against this at the Planning Commission. We've got at least fifteen warehouses on the Couchville Pike exit, fifteen, being built or already built. So we're just simply asking you to give us a break. Just give us a break. Listen to our commissioner, and listen to your constituents, and we just ask you, please don't approve this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Richard Bostick?
I'm Richard Bostick. I lived at 947 Lone Oak Road for about fourteen years. Our road's not big enough for two vehicles to pass on a lot of places. In some places, it's not even a place to even pull off on the grass to let somebody else by. Also, there's going to be hundreds of dump trucks running up and down through there, heavy dump trucks, rocks, and dirt, whatever. It's going to ruin the roads. Also, the blasting is going to hurt the foundations and their noise and everything. And I just, we moved out there, you know, to live in peace. I've had two mirrors knocked off my truck. I've had two mailboxes knocked down. My neighbors have had mailboxes knocked down because there's not enough room. And there's plenty of land up and down the interstate, up and down 840, why I build in a small subdivision, the homeowners own them. Thank you.
Thank you, Bostick. Ms. Amanda Burnett?
Hi. My name is Amanda Burnett. I live on 2650 Lone Oak Road. I live directly across from this. Printed out packets for everyone. I don't know if you've gotten them. If not, I hope you see them before you make a vote. They are pictures. I'm a visual person, so they're pictures of the flooding that happens on these roads. There's pictures of school buses on these roads trying to pass cars. There's pictures of eighteen-wheelers, just so you can see how big our roads are. I have three young boys. They, two of them go to Gladeville Elementary. I pass a school bus almost every single morning and have to go off in a ditch every single morning not to hit these school buses. One of these days, these school buses are going to come to an eighteen-wheeler. The expansion on this road is not going to cover the two ninety-degree turns, which is where the problem exists for these, these school buses. A lot of things were talked about, but you can go through that. I printed off GPS directions which take you down Underwood, McCrery, and Lone Oak for these truck drivers. There's pictures of the damage that's been done to all of our property, fences, mailboxes, et cetera, that these eighteen-wheelers come down our roads. So there was a land use plan that's, that's not been approved yet, but coming out, but I, I have seen it. It is recommended that this stays residential. I'll kind of read some, some things that I took from it. There's a contracted company, land planners and architects, architects that conducted research, reviewed documents, and facilitated public meetings to provide a master plan. An integral part of this process was gathering public information from the citizens and county representatives to reflect the desires of the community. Boundaries should be defined to limit this type of development. County has recently provided utilities in the area around the speedway for these type of commercial developments. Higher-density residential should be allowed in the area along Lone Oak Road, given the encouraging sprawl. So we recommend, please do not do this. Please do not do this in front of our houses. Let it be toward the speedway where it's set up for this type of infrastructure. Eighteen-wheelers, I know y'all's all seen kind of the news with Harpreader Road, there was a wreck, there was another wreck recently. They're coming down our roads. If you put this in a residential area, the traffic is going to get worse. They're going to see more accidents, and it's, it's going to be, it's going to be devastating, especially for my children, I have to put on a school bus. The flooding, I've spent thirty thousand dollars to divert water off of my property. They're saying it's going to fix. There's no guarantee. We're going to probably have to spend more money trying to fix the flooding on this property. You're here, going to hear a lot of arguments that is beneficial to us. As a homeowner who has just built her home, it's not. There's nothing but a neighborhood that would be, that's why I bought, I bought this land and built this house, is to have my kids have a safe place where they can play outside and not be worried about them getting hit by a truck. You know, straight on the school system, less security with the neighborhood, taxes, land values are going to improve. It's not. So thank you for your time, and I hope that you vote no.
Thank you so much. Ms. Kathy Leffich?
My name is Kathy Leffich. My husband and I live at 268 Nice Road. Our property is, corners Lone Oak and Nice, so we're directly across from where this proposal is. I'm going to talk about the tractor-trailers, too. The packet, will you guys see the fence tore down? That's my fence. That's been hit seven times by tractor-trailers. They can't make the turn on Nice Road, and yet they try. I don't know why they follow their GPSs down those roads. There's not a line down Lone Oak Road, or they're not marked, or Nice Road. They're just not very wide. They also are tarred and chip roads. School buses travel those roads four times a day, two in the morning, two in the afternoon. And like I say, if you meet one on Lone Oak, somebody's getting over, and if you meet one on Nice, somebody's backing up. We know when the buses come, so we kind of watch out for them. About three months ago, I followed a tractor-trailer from Lone Oak Road to Couchville Pike, across the interstate to Nissan. I don't know why they do what they do. It doesn't make sense, but they do it. They come down Underwood, they come down Lone Oak, and they come down Nice. It's not just a Lone Oak Road issue. And the developer has said that he will make the road wider to their two entrances, but that doesn't do anything for Lone Oak, Underwood, or Nice Road. Those tractor-trailers are coming down those roads. And I have a CDL license. There are two S-curves on Underwood, and there are four on Lone Oak. And I'm telling you, you cannot maintain a lane. There's no way to maintain a lane on those roads. I've lived on this road for forty-six years, and I am not opposed to development or change because I have seen it. I don't expect Mr. Lanham to keep his land a farm, that is, but I do ask that it remains own residential as it currently is. And I'm asking that you please vote no. It's a safety issue, and it's a quality of life issue for all of us.
Thank you, Ms. Kathy. Ms. Tammy Hill?
My name is Tammy Hill, and I live at 2241 Lone Oak Road, which is that little square that's cut out of Mr. Lanham's property. We have one acre in his sixty acres. This somehow got, his dad did it to somebody years ago, and we bought it from somebody who bought it from him. And we built our forever home there. And as you can see, the site plan, there, there's no way we could live there if this came. It's like a hundred feet from our back property. The blasting would tear our house up. It's way too close. We've lived out there four years now, and I've also seen the issues with the road being too skinny for eighteen-wheelers, school buses. Even two big vehicles can't really pass each other safely. I, I know Mr. Lanham, he's a nice man. I want him to be able to sell his property, but I feel like for the quality of life of everyone who lives here, it needs to be residential. It's just designed that way. I know we need growth in this county, but there has to be a better way to bring it than this. I just ask you all to please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. Ms. Sonya Robinson?
My name is Sonya Robinson. I live at 1824 Underwood Road, which is also impacted by these warehouses. Two thousand and six, you have a growth plan that was adopted in two thousand and six. In this growth plan, it is this area considered high-density residential. Since that time, there is one subdivision that whenever topped out will have one hundred and thirty-three homes in it. That's just a subdivision on the north side. There are also about forty houses up and down Lone Oak, I mean, Underwood and Lone Oak, that are, as of now, being built. This road hasn't changed. This road is about, there's three different sizes of this road. There's a regulation road, there is a ten-foot road, and there are probably maybe twelve-foot. These roads do not accommodate semi-trucks on these roads. They won't ever. It was said that these semi-trucks will be coming in on the south side. That would be wonderful, if they would come in on the south side. But we all know that's not going to happen. I followed one the other day off of Stewart's Ferry Pike that turned onto Underwood. I followed it, because that's the way I go home. I followed it. I thought, surely, you're not going to go down that fork to Underwood. So it stopped to a complete stop to turn the curve to go all the way to Fellowship Road. Then it went to Couchville, turned left, went to the Dinsko Warehouse that is on Couchville right at the interstate. It took it all the way around that way. The same thing is going to happen when you put three warehouses on Lone Oak Road that total nine hundred thousand square feet on a residential, small residential road. These roads cannot accommodate any more tractor-trailer trucks. Sheriff Brown, Superintendent Steve Murphy is called constantly out there because of these semi-trucks being on these small roads. There are signs that are literally put up that say, "No semi-trucks." They pay no attention to them at all. I'm asking you tonight to wait until this new growth plan, which should be adopted within the next two or three months, to vote on that. Go by the recommendation tonight, whatever your commissioner's going to do tonight. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. I think I have Mr. Kevin Hill.
Could be Lee.
Could be Lee.
Another Kevin on the way ahead.
Thank you.
Pay your attention. Kevin Lee, 2440 Lone Oak. I'm just now about to move in my house. I've been building it for the last six, seven months. I'm going to be right across the street, pretty much. Mr. Mayor, I'm going to try not to repeat anything like you asked earlier, so I try to delete a lot of stuff, so I'm going to try to hold true. You know, no one's opposed to selling this property. We're opposed to a zoning change that's going to negatively affect our quality of life and security. So I'm going to try to hit a couple of things I haven't heard. From a safety concern, if you go down the street during lunchtime and different breaks, people park from the warehouses. They leave the parking lot, and they park all on our street. You can see trash, you can see blue gloves, I don't know what they're using those for, that are thrown out. You smell pot. If they want to smoke pot, break. That's not my, but you still smell it, again, in our neighborhood. Right, and there, and when you add sixty, what did she say, nine hundred thousand square feet more of sixty acres, that's going to be more people taking breaks up and down the road, pulling in our driveways and everything. There's just not room. So that's a safety concern. Something else is, my father-in-law spoke earlier, loud music at night. Past midnight, the people on break go out in their parking lot, and they play their music loud. Well, he went over there to try to get them to turn it down, because it's after midnight, and he's right across the street, and he almost got arrested for going on the property. So that's a safety concern as well, and a quality of life. So, that's a safety concern a- as well, and a quality of life. Really, I, I, I didn't have, I agree with everything else, I don't wanna repeat, but I just ask that you oppose this request. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Ms. Kathy Dotson? Did I say that right? Did I make that up too? Did I get it right?
My name is Kathy Dotson, I've lived out on Lone Oak Road for over fifty years. I've got a daughter that lives on my property too. I have raised both my girls, I've had my grandchildren out there. This, we all talk about the water. We, we've learned, the ones of us on that end have learned, that we just have to be patient with the water. It will go down, it's gone, but these things will be with us the rest of our lives. These things aren't gonna go away. That's what I'm asking y'all tonight. Think about our quality of life. We have had beautiful neighbors. It's beautiful out there, and to move that kind of warehouses right on the top of residential men and women and children, I don't understand it, how we got to where we are. I love the neighborhood, I love Wilson County, or I wouldn't still be here after fifty years. The property, I think of the animals. I know nobody said anything about them, but they're just as much a piece of that part of Wilson County as we are. Those warehouses have made a tremendous difference in what is on that end of the county now, whenever it comes to trees, to the animal population. I can tell you right now, our property was Whopper Will Farms. Whenever we were out there, the first ten or fifteen, twenty years, you could hear them every night. I might hear them once a week now. And I know it's because we have torn up so much of the land. We don't need this. Look. Excuse me. This is hard. I love this area. I love everybody in it. So I'm asking y'all, please, vote against this. There's got to be another way that that land can be used than putting that kind of warehouse right in our front doors, because my house will be right in front of that middle warehouse. That's where my home will be. And I'm like the rest of them. The blasting, whenever they blasted for eight forty and the other ones that are out there, my house rattled, cracks. My foundation, right now, I'm gonna have to have some work done on my foundation. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Kathy. And Mr. Bob Lanham.
My name is Bob Lanham, I'm a co-owner of the property with my sister, Lou Jean. I live at two-eighty-two Drivers Lane in Galton, but I'm a native of Wilson County, born here in nineteen forty-four. Most of the discussion and opposition centers around three things: flooding, trucks, and dream homes. I'd like to address those. I'd rather play the role of a problem solver rather than a complainer. No one has corrected us, the problem of flooding on Lone Oak Road ever since it existed. Sheriff Bryan has personally, personally visited the site and agrees that it's a very dangerous situation that needs to be eliminated as soon as possible. My buyer has a plan and will eliminate the flooding at no expense to the county. My developer also has presented a plan to prevent truck traffic on Lone Oak Road. First, by limiting truck entrances and exit gates to the south end of the property near the logistics facility. He has planned to widen and construct a new road from the southern entrance, some seventeen-hundred feet north, at an estimated cost of two million dollars, again, at no expense to the taxpayers. Rooms to go in two thousand and nineteen, and committed to paying taxes of nearly four million dollars over a six-year period. That's with Wilson County tax abatements. I now pay four hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Just let, let that sink in a moment. They also employ two hundred workers and have a retail outlet as well. To quote Governor Bill Lee, Tennessee's central location and easy access to eight interstates makes it a perfect location for them. Another quote, "The project not only provides career employment opportunities, but also accelerates retail growth along Interstate eight forty." That's from Mayor Randall Hutto of The Tennessean in two thousand and nineteen. Some new neighbors who moved into our county less than three years ago drove stakes in the ground and named it their dream home. Compare this to my family that goes back to when my great-great-grandfather Irving Sanders, born in eighteen twenty-three, settled that land. My great-grandparents are buried there. Our stake driving goes back a hundred and ninety-nine years and eight generations. We have held on to our land at the advice of those before us until this present time. Our families have dreams too, to pass on to our children and grandchildren, but we're stuck, boxed in by forty commercial facilities, plus no approved sewer lines from Wilson County or Lebanon Water to build homes and zone residential in the middle of a huge state industrial corridor that was approved by Wilson County in nineteen ninety-six. However, sewer lining for commercial use is available next to my farm. How convenient. So what do I do? As the lady said, the animals. Sit on the flat rock in my field, singing "Home, Home" on the range, and watch the deer and antelope play, but that's not part of my dream. Your planning commission, whom you trust, has amended the land use plan and recommends our rezoning for the overall good to the citizens of Wilson County. Please adopt their recommendation and vote yes to rezone. And thanks to some of my many supporters, if you'll stand in the back and raise your hand, I'd appreciate it for supporting me and being here tonight. I also have a petition signed by over two hundred registered voters in Wilson County in the thirteenth and adjacent districts, that I'd like to make part of the record tonight.
Thank you. That concludes our public comment period. I hear a motion to go back into session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, Mr. Pershur, if you would restate the rezoning request for property located on twenty-five, twenty-five Lone Oak Road.
The following application for rezoning property will be, will be presented to the full county commission on Monday night. Application has been made by Joe Haddix of Civil Site Design Group on behalf of Developer Strategic Capital Partners LLC with permission from property owner Bob Lanham, or Robert Lanham, who has applied jointly requesting a land use plan amendment from high-density residential area to a commercial center area, and rezoning of the same property from R-1 Rural Residential to C-4 Plan Commercial. Property is located at twenty-five, twenty-five Lone Oak Road and contains approximately sixty-point-seven-four acres. The property is further referenced as Wilson County Property Map one thirty-eight, parcel thirty-two point zero three. The ro, the rezoning request was presented to the Wilson County Planning Commission on November eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, and is being forwarded to the Wilson County Commission with a positive recommendation from the Planning Commission.
This time I'll go to Commissioner Hobbs, this is his district, and what say you?
Multiple meetings, multiple months have gone by since May on this. You've heard the people speak in the back. This is not a place for commercial growth. There's plenty of places out on Couchville and four-fifty-two for commercial growth. This is a high-density residential area, and I will vote no on this, and I do not recommend this.
Mr. McFarland.
Mr. Pershur, what is, obviously, it's a transportation problem everywhere, their roads, what's the plan for that, and what's the plan for the watershed that's coming off those roofs and parking lots?
Sir, with regard to the county's plan or timeline for improving Lone Oak Road, I couldn't tell you. That opportunity and responsibility may look more appropriately with the road commission. The only way I have to effect improvements would be through development of the property, whether or not it gets rezoned. If it gets developed residentially or if it develops commercially, I, I do have some arrows in my quiver, if you will, as a planning director, or as a development services director, to request or require certain improvements to be made with development. That's really the only option I have in the planning department. Otherwise...
You can't require improvements then.
I can require improvements with development. I can't just require them as it lay fallow, no. The road commission would have some opportunity, if they have it in their budget and can get it into their cycle, to make improvements to existing road networks.
So we asked to approve this, and there's no improvement plan?
That, this plan, this master plan actually does propose improvement. This is, this is actually, north is to the right on the paper, on the paper.
And they are proposing with their master plan to expand from the wider portion of Lone Oak Road, which is about thirty-two feet wide, in front of, between thirty-two and thirty-eight feet wide, in front of the last entrance to the commercial development that's to, to the south here. They're proposing two eleven-foot wide lanes and two four-foot shelters all the way around this first curve. Their main entrance would be here on the south side of the, the development, and then they're proposing eleven-foot wide, two eleven-foot wide lanes and four-foot shelters, all the way to a low-water bridge, if you're familiar with the property. That, that's, that's the limits of what they're proposing for improvement, as I understand it, in terms of road improvements. They are proposing, they have stated on record that they will eliminate or fix any of the problems in the area. I think that's a, there's a, there's significant drainage issues in the area, so that's, that's a, that's a tall order, I'll just say, I wouldn't be there.
Are those detention ponds, the...
Those are, in concept, those would be where they could put detention ponds. Typically, you do want them on the downstream side, without being the counties here, you do want them on the downstream or outflow, outfall side of the development. The water does generally flow from northeast to south-southwest across the property, so you wouldn't want them on the downstream side of the development, if you would, to withhold water from getting on the additional properties. But those are conceptual detention ponds. They are also proposing with this master plan, I don't know if you can see it here, but a thirty-foot landscape buffer behind the road improvements. And, of course, we would hash that out if it gets rezoned at the time of site plan development, along with the road improvements. At the time of site plan development.
You know my position on watershed and flooding?
Yes, sir.
Well, we're trying to accomplish the core of engineers, and just those things are twenty feet deep, and not gonna be adequate enough to do the parking lots and the watershed off the road. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Commissioner McFarland, I will tell you, on the road projects, we have contracted with Collier to work on infrastructure funds that are coming from the federal government to do an overall assessment of the, all the roads in Wilson County related to traffic and accidents that have required fatalities. So I don't know that the roads that were mentioned here today, Nice and, and Underwood, and those roads would qualify in this, so we'll take the top fifteen. We'll work towards the infrastructure money coming from the, the federal act that was just passed recently, along with some road commission money, but it would be, so there is a plan there, but they would be way down, I would think, in our list at this particular time to cover that. Just to give you an idea of where we at on, on that.
Well, I know, we asked to approve this, but we don't know about the approval, correct?
What I'm telling you is, they'd be, they would be, they'll be in that study, but now, again, it's traffic, which we're not talking, when we're talking about traffic, we're talking about volume of traffic and blood, really, to be honest with you, for that. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Couple of questions for Mr. Tom.
Yes, sir.
Really, um, how long have we been dealing with this certain project? How many years?
Between a year and a half and two years, to the best of my recollection.
Wow, okay. Two years, possibly, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Discussion around this particular project, in my humble opinion, sort of forced a conversation about a land use plan update from our two thousand and six land use plan. We did start that in earnest, we did have public input meetings last spring. In the interim, Mount Juliet has opted to request a fairly significant amendment to the growth boundaries and plan subsequent, subsequent planning regions, which would affect what our land use plan would, would even have, have authority over, or jurisdiction over. So, until that growth plan is resolved, one way or the other, Watertown has also made some proposals for expansion. Until that growth plan is resolved, my land use plan is, or not mine, but the county's land use plan update is, is effectively kind of in the...
Right.
In the hold pattern, until we can make some progress on that growth boundary.
So there's a potential that Mount Juliet City could actually be pushed in if it's accepted?
Their proposal goes to the east side of Lone Oak. So the folks that are, that you've heard from that reside on Lone Oak, across from this, would be in Mount Juliet's planning region, should their growth boundaries do. But on this side, it's, it's in the traditional, what's been traditionally referred to as the South Wilson Plant Growth Area. And someone did mention, and this is correct, the corridor along A-40 has been an economic development corridor for the county, as approved by the county sometime in the early to mid-nineties.
Okay. Thank you for answering that, because there's a potential that it could become Mount Juliet City's.
This development would not.
But on, but on the...
On the west side of Lone Oak.
Correct, correct. Thank you for clarifying that, so there's a potential...
It, well, the planning commission in their authority did recommend a, an amendment to the land use plan in conjunction with this rezoning, and, and you are being asked to consider both. You would have been considered that, to, you would have been asked to consider only the rezoning up until about four to six months ago, when the state legislature opted to require that you vote on any amendment to a land use plan.
Commissioner Dow?
The land use pla, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, the land use plan as is now, does this violate that?
Until such time as you recommend approval of the planning commission's land use plan amendment, I believe it does.
Mr. Smith, continue, sorry.
Correct, no, no, thank you. Last question. So if this fails, and say, Mr. Lanham wants to sell his property, do you know how many homes, in particular, that could be put on this piece of property as it stands?
It's currently R-1 zoned, if you'll give me just a moment, I can tell you, an estimate.
As he's talking through that, just for clarification, the land use plan that's out there now, I think, is sometime due in April, or, or somewhere around there, March or April. And then, the urban boundary growth part that we're talking about, they would not become a part of the city, but they would be in their planning area, because today you have to be, request to be annexed in there, but anything that goes on there would have to go before their planning commission. Go ahead.
It could get approximately seventy-nine lots in R-1 zoning on public sewer of some sort, whether it be sanitary sewer, which is not available there, or step system, which could potentially be available there.
Say if they were to go for rezoning, what would be the highest rezoning there?
Well, it's, it's, it's spec'd for high-density residential development. I would have similar infrastructure concerns at, with a rezoning to, even though the land use plan calls for it to be high-density residential, I would be able to say that, yes, it's compliant, the rezoning request would be compliant with the land use plan at present. However, I would not be able to, to go along with some of the infrastructure there without significant improvement to the road, similar to what they're proposing with their commercial development.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Dow?
Yes, was the planning commission, did they make an approval on this the last time? They did?
In November, they did. They recommended approval, but the last time, I do not believe they did.
Okay, so what changed? What changed? That's what I wanna know for this time. Do you know, did they say?
Yes, sir.
So you turned it down, because you didn't have enough there?
We didn't have, we didn't have the votes to do it. To get eight, she asked for six, no.
Okay, so...
What happened, as I recall, in time before, I should, I had six out of the eleven to carry anything, couldn't get six, four, couldn't get six.
Okay, so this was not unanimous then, right?
This last time, I feel, the vote was, it did require...
Sixty.
It did get the, required votes to approve.
All right, thank you.
No, unanimous. Commissioner Glover?
I can see the only cutout that's in there that I guess one of the speakers was talking about is up on the far right.
Yes, sir.
Is that correct? And I don't see how the speaker that came up here earlier, I forget, I don't know her name, I don't see how she wasn't in tears, thinking about that she's gonna be surrounded by the, the parking lot, and if they go out on the back porch, they're gonna be looking at the, the building, but, so that's, I'm looking at it right, correct?
Correct.
Yes, sir.
That's all I have.
It's, it's a single house that's on the same side of the road, that's in the proximity of this development.
Mr. Franklin?
Yeah, thank you. To Commissioner Smith's question, I, I'm not sure you answered it. In, in high-density land use, what is the maximum density that could be?
I did not bring my zoning ordinance, Bobby, but I think it's...
I did not bring my zoning ordinance, Bobby, but I think it's a single-family's ten-thousand-square-foot lot allowance or lot density, ten-thousand-square-foot lot density. Multifamily, in the county, you have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals to get approval. It can allow up to seventeen units per acre, but typically, it does, it does not.
So in the land use plan that exists?
Yes. No, no, that's zoning.
The land use plan?
That would be for R-2 zoning for, at present.
Present, but, but what I'm, I'm inquiring about is the land use?
The high-density residential.
High-density.
What I'm saying is the, the high-density residential zone district in the county is R-2.
Okay.
Mr. Gentry?
Yeah, I noticed concerns of the traffic and the flooding.
Yes, sir.
And the flooding's been there for years, I understand, correct?
Yes, sir.
And the traffic currently, they have big eighteen-wheelers going down the road, correct? Now?
My understanding is they, they do have both semi-vehicles that get errantly directed by their navigational systems, as well as construction traffic on the north side coming to the developments on the north side of Lone Oak.
On Lone Oak Road, right? They're on that road as well as school buses? Now, school buses, or cars can't get by them either, correct?
I can give you.
By the picture I got in here, it, it's basically just above a single lane. Not much better than a single lane, correct?
Sometime ago, we took some measurements of the road, these are informal, but at the low-water bridge, if I can find it here, well, at Nice Road, at the intersection of Nice Road, which is at the very top of the page, or very, very close there, too, the road is approximately fourteen and a half feet wide, fourteen foot at the termini, actually, Lone Oak is fourteen-foot wide there. Nice Road is fourteen and a half foot wide. It's thirty-one and a half foot at the southern termini of Lone Oak Road with Couchville Pike, twenty-nine and a half feet just south of the southernmost Lone Oak entrance to Pro Lodges Building, which is just to the south, fifteen feet wide at the thirty-three-thousand-ten Lone Oak Road mailbox, twenty-eight foot in the curve at center line of driveway intersection into southernmost end of the proposed rezoning. There's their proposed entrance, it's right here, it's approximately twenty-eight-foot wide right there. The concrete slab itself for the low-water bridge is twenty feet wide, but the pavement is just above sixteen-foot wide at the low-water bridge crossing, which is the limits of what they're proposing to widen, eleven-foot, is just to the south of the low-water bridge.
Okay, so they're proposing to widen it?
They're proposing to widen it to twenty-two-foot lanes with four-foot shoulders.
Would that allow two eighteen-wheelers to pass each other?
Yes, it would. Up to the low-water bridge, which is right here, going toward.
Right there.
Their, their entrance is right here, they're proposing an emergency entrance, right here. An emergency entrance.
Okay, it appears to me, if it's going to be improved, that'd be the only way it'd be improved in a short time versus the state and the county, correct? If it's going to be improved at all.
That is likely a correct statement.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Reese?
I know the planning commission gives a positive recommendation. What was the staff recommendation on this project?
It was a negative recommendation. We did not, we could not recommend approval based on the current land use plan and the infrastructure concerns.
Thank you.
Both the road and drainage.
Mr. Weathers?
Well, I've got it written down, because I don't know why I'd talk all day if I didn't. I'm good. Aren't you glad?
Yes.
What, first of all, this land use plan, the thing we asked to do almost two years ago?
Yes, ma'am.
Two years ago?
Yes, ma'am.
Was to make the colors match on the land use map that you're using.
And you, you have done that. You did approve the colors to match, the land use, or, I don't want to say colors, the land uses to match the existing zoning in the county.
And?
So we did make that amendment in June or July of two, 2021.
The other thing is, have we rezoned property throughout there, all up along through there? Have we not rezoned property since 2006?
Yes, you have.
So that's, that's amended in the land use plan, isn't it? Okay.
That's why we had to change the land use plan.
That's right.
To match some of the zoning. It matched some existing zoning that was not in the land use plan, but it also matched a couple of places that you guys chose in your wisdom to go against the currently approved land use plan.
That's because A-40 has ripped through theirs since we started all this process.
Now, to the south of here, the majority of the, the zoning was compliant with the land use plan.
Right.
Because it fronts on Couchville Pike and is near the interchange.
I typically don't go against the wishes of a sitting commissioner. And we'll be friends when we leave here, just like we've been friends for years. But in August, there's some of you sitting around me that voted against the sitting commissioner and the planning recommendations, so it does happen. With what's before us tonight, I'm going to take exception, because as a member of the planning commission, I've heard both sides of this request, every time it was brought before planning over a period of two and a half years. And I'm sticking with a positive recommendation for our planning commission. From day one, day one, the flooding on a narrow road was a major concern from nearby neighbors. And I get that. I've seen it myself over the years in all parts of the county. I'm a native to Wilson County. I've never lived anywhere else. I've been here for eleven generations. I know we cannot afford to widen roads all over the county. But if this is approved, the developers have agreed to spend $2 million to stop flooding and to widen it. I see this as a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to correct a safety issue and to improve the greater good of the whole community. And I'm focused to approve this rezon.
Mr. Kurtz? Mr. Kurtz?
Been a lot said about the high residential and the capacity on what could go on this piece of property. And, you know, I'm going to bring up the fact that it, it can't be a PUD under our current land use plan, because there's not enough acreage.
It can be a C-4 master plan development.
Under a high, the high residential, but we?
No, no, not under high residential. What they're proposing is C-4 zoning, which is a master plan-specific zone district. It's not a PUD.
I'm talking if it was residential.
Oh, that's correct.
There's not enough land, if it was residential, to be a PUD.
That's correct.
It's almost the exact size that I spoke out against before.
Yes, sir.
And the number of homes that could go on there would only go on there if there's enough soils available or a step system put in that can carry the capacity of the number of homes, which we would have no clue at this point. So we can't even speculate. But even if we did put homes there, at least when people drove up and down this road, they would see something that fit. You know, the, the, past that last curve and all the way to the south, to the north, this doesn't fit. I would agree, the warehouse on the corner has direct access to Couchville Pike. This doesn't. And it's the, it was come, this same project came, was going to come before the county commission before, if I'm not mistaken, and it was withdrawn.
Yes, sir.
Because it didn't have the votes at that time. And I would assume that there's probably a greater chance to have the votes, maybe, and that's why it's up here today, I, I don't know. I can't see that this warehouse, where it's located, and I know we hear about roads and we hear about schools and all of that, of all of these changes, but the fact that we have to change something makes no sense. Now, to Ms. Weathers' point, some changes make sense. And when we, when those make sense, we do those. This doesn't make any sense, that we would change something when everything around this piece of property is residential, except these warehouses.
Mr. Shaller?
Yeah, Tom, I just want a quick question. If the property is residential, you can require them to improve the roads, correct?
The road commission's current minimum standard and our minimum standard in the subdivision regulations before the planning commission, if it's got fifty lots or more, we can acquire a center turn lane and a D-cell or X-cell lane, or some other, some other alternative that the road commission deems appropriate, such as a more broad widening along the frontage that they have. That's what we can require at a minimum at present, regardless of what their traffic study may render. For something like seventy-nine lots, it probably would not even warrant that much improvement, but that's the road commission's minimum standard and our minimum standard for fifty lots are better in a, before the planning commission.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
I got a call for the question, I'll need a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Two in the hopper left. I got Commissioner Hobbs, Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Hobbs. We will hear them speak, and then we will need a recommendation from this commission on what to vote on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I respect the call of question as well to Commissioner McFarland. Really quick, could I ask the, the IT people to be able to show us the adjacent properties that you had up with the, the previous developments or the, the factories that are around there?
That one does, we also have a county aerial on another slide, if you need that.
So that's now the, the proposal, right? That, the one that's in green, correct?
The one that's in teal is the one that's being proposed for rezoning. And this is now facing north up, and the low-water bridge is about where that curve is, I believe.
We've got many on the, I guess, the, the east side, correct? Now, the one that's just south of the, the proposed, correct?
I'm, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, the east side of A-40?
West side.
Or west side, I'm sorry?
A-40 is right here, and this proposal is on the west side of A-40, and then the residents, some of the residents you heard from, they may live across the street from this, this thing here, on the west of.
And can you point out the road?
Is this the road?
This is the one that?
Yes, this is the Pro Lodges Building, Couchville Pike is off the screen down here. You come in alone right here, it's approximately twenty-eight thousand-foot wide all the way to about here, then it's hard to produce a fit, although it's still somewhat wide here. It gets to twenty-eight-foot wide this curve, then it goes pretty quickly down to about fourteen to seventeen-foot width.
Where's the improvement going to be?
From basically this entrance to the Pro Lodges, all the way around into their main entrance as proposed, and then on up Lone Oak to the south side of the low-water bridge. So it does not include the northern climbs of this development.
Thank you, Mr. Tom.
Last, Mr., Commissioner Hobbs?
You said your land, yeah, land use plan, Tom, is going to be out April, May?
I did not say that. I said, I said that the growth plan is currently in, in, in negotiation, and once we get to a more solidified idea of what's going to be whose jurisdiction, we will proceed with the plant, with the.
What is your recommendation?
I'm sorry?
Old man?
To some extent, yes.
What is your recommendation on this?
My recommendation is, as it has been the past several times it's come before you, which is?
What is that?
It's, it's a, I cannot recommend approval based on the current land use plan, notwithstanding the recommendation of the planning commission at last November, or this past November's meeting, as well as infrastructure concerns.
Thank you, sir.
I need a motion from this body.
Motion.
Two?
Back in session.
No, we're back, we're, we're back in session. I need a motion to either deny or approve this resolution before you rezon.
Now, including the land use plan?
I got a motion by Commissioner Hobbs to not change the land use plan and not rezone this property from its current condition. Do I hear a second?
Second.
A second. So I have to have a reason from you, other than, has to be specific.
Safety.
Reason is safety, is that good for you?
Yeah, it's up to them what they want to say. Assuming their motion carries here tonight, there's a sixty-day window there for anybody to file and change the court. And I have to defend the decision. The more reasons you can give to support the decision, the easier it is to defend.
Safety for high-density residential area.
Of safety, I got a motion and a second. Now I can have discussion again. Correct? Nope?
No, we voted to.
We're ready to vote? I got a motion and a second. If you're ready to vote, we'll do, we'll do a roll call vote, please. Yes, I can explain the motion. The motion is, you're voting, you'll vote yes. A motion and a second was to deny the rezoning and you'll, and the land use plan. And so you'll vote yes, if that's what you want to do, if you want to deny it. If you don't want to deny it, you'll vote no. So you're voting yes if you want to deny it, you'll vote no if you don't want to deny it, okay?
And this is what I call when making motions brought in here tonight will require a first-hand vote, twenty-three hundred years, I can add.
Well, thirteen, at least thirteen to, for it to pass. So the motion was to deny the rezoning. If that's what you want to do, you vote yes. If you don't want to deny the rezoning, you vote no. Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds, good with your vote? Please record. Nineteen yes, four no, the property is not rezoned. Thank you, Mr. Tom. We'll move on. For the minutes committee, Commissioner Phil.
Minutes committee of the county commission of Wilson County made a regular session on Thursday, December 8, 2022, in the upstairs conference room. A copy of the minutes is in your packet, I move that they be received and filed.
Second. Any discussion? So you're not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Before reading of the minutes?
Move we dispense with the reading of the minutes?
Any discussion on that? Mr. Denton?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, and Mayor, at, at our minutes meeting, this question was asked, and our attorney didn't know the answer to it, none of us knew the answer to it. Last, at our last meeting, we had a pre-meeting, a pre-report given by the Wilson County Promotions. It was, we were invited to come, we, it lasted twenty minutes, it was about a lot of money. And it was, not only that, we got a real, very detailed plan given to us. And I guess my problem is, is that I'm not sure that's proper decorum. Why was this, why was it not given to our steering committee to give to, to be put on our agenda and then voted on at the, at the, at that meeting? Because they were, what they were lib, basically were lobbying for, that's not a good word, but they were promoting a report that was coming later already, was going to prove from the Ward Agricultural Center. So why, the minutes stands in a position where we cannot write minutes for an action that where we're not in legal session? And so what do we do about those times when we're not in legal session? And yet there was questions asked, and there, it was a lengthy period of time, it was information the community needs to hear. And I think it was, now, don't get me wrong, the cotton candy was great, I, I loved that. But the decorum, I'm not so sure it was the proper procedure to have a pre-meeting before our legal session meeting. That away, as far as our legal record shows, right now, that meeting didn't exist. And there was some questions, and there was some answers, and there was some information given, I think that should be on record.
So let me, let me see if I can help you with that. So the idea was, as we change commissions from time to time, many of you know the ins and outs of Wilson County Promotions. Many people think Wilson County Promotions is a part of Wilson County government, which it is not. Many people don't know that three to five-hundred thousand dollars a year that they have left over goes back into the Jamesy Ward Ag Center. And so they wanted to make sure that our new commissioners knew that. So that's why we invited them early to hear that, for them to come and let you ask questions. They were not here to get anything approved or planned or whatever. What they do is outside of our government. Now, if they're going to bring something to us, it will normally come to the Jamesy Ward Ag Center or the Ag Committee as a recommendation to you. For example, Mr. Maynard was going to do it this month, but because we had what going on, he'll be here next month at 6:30, if you want to come, and just talk about anything you would like to learn about the financial part of Wilson County government. Again, we'll have lots of questions there, but we have a lot of new people, and so we're just trying to provide that information for you. It won't happen again with this commission on that, might happen with something else, but that's why it's like that. So, you know, I mean, that's why it's not a part of our legal meeting. It was just good information for you. And we may do that during this first year, because we just have some new people on the commission. So it was just information only, but nothing that we talked about or that you asked questions about.
about was approved or gives them any permission to do anything at all.
It wasn't current, but, well, there was information given that probably much of the community doesn't know, I think, and is not aware of by some of the questions that's asked, at least the people who talked to me. And that's what I was interested in, it being available for them because at that meeting, they had that information and we have no legal record of that. So, but it is not something that's a regular occurrence.
No, sir, it's not. It just, again, it was just for you guys here to understand that part because you have a lot to do with it. And I would say the people that have asked you about information there, if you would like to get their information, I probably could get them in touch with the right people that could give them a short synopsis or history of how it all works. I think we could make that happen for them if you have some people. If you just direct into my office, I'll try to take care of that for you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. I believe we're good with the reading of the minutes. I had a motion, a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I have nothing from communication from the chair. We'll go to notaries. Mr. Goodall, is there anybody to be added to the list?
We're good.
Have a motion to approve a notary list?
No.
A second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ag extension, you are to appoint three members to the ag extension, serve a two-year term on the ag extension committee. Ag extension director, Mr. Lucas Holman, has made these recommendations for you if you would like to be, if they would like to reappoint these people. There will be Commissioner Mike Kurtz, Ms. Debbie Jones and Mr. Raymond Burns. Information about these are in your packet. Do I hear a motion on these?
No.
I hear a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Planning Commission, you would confirm my appointment for three members of the planning commission to serve a four-year term upon your confirmation. I'd like to appoint Ms. Jamie Nichols Nicholson, Mr. Gary Noakes and Mr. James Woods. Do I hear a nomination?
Second.
Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Report from Emergency Management Committee, Commissioner Smith.
No report.
And Emergency Management Director's report, Director Cooper. This case is going to be Mr. Chief Brian Newberry.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. Sheriff's had to be quick, so I'm going to get on with this real quick. Director Cooper's under the weather, just recovering from the flu, so they had to step up there. You have the numbers in your packet there. I won't read those to you. We'll just kind of summarize the recruit class. We had seventeen of those start and seventeen of those just graduated eleven weeks of fire school. So they're off working shift for the next month or so and then they'll start the advanced DMT in January and hopefully we get all seventeen of those out at that point in time. So we'll kind of see where that goes. It's been a good process so far, so hopefully we have a good outcome on that in the May. And appreciate all the new Commissioners, welcome, and I hope everybody has a happy holiday and Merry Christmas. Any questions?
DMT training in the house?
Yes and no. It's in-house, but we contracted it out through Vol State. So they take care of everything, but we are hosting it here. It'll be at the ATC.
They're stuck here.
Yes, which is one of our personnel, but they are working through Vol State, yes, sir. So complicated, but yes.
Mr. Cooper.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Director Newberry. Report from Law Enforcement Committee, Commissioner Kurtz.
No report.
Sheriff's report, Sheriff Brian.
Thank you, Mayor, County Commissioners. Your report's in your packet. I'll be short. Apparently nobody wanted to hear me or Director Luttrell talk, so they all left. But your report's in your packet. The number's pretty much on par. Would like to look at the jail and the jail numbers, they're, they still staying constant pretty, pretty high. Where we at, where we are at on the jail, we should be T Tennessee Corrections Institute, who certifies all jail beds, were, was at the office today certifying all the new beds. So at that point, they'll have to come back again before we occupy it, which I hope maybe first of February or a little after. So we are a little ahead of schedule and that's moving on. So that's my report unless there's any questions.
Mr. Cooper.
Any discussion?
Sir? Yes, yes. I'm going to start charging for tours if anybody wants to. Yes, several.
Any other questions?
You being one of them, yeah.
Got a motion, second. Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Sheriff Brian. Report from the Education Committee, Commissioner Marlowe.
Education Committee met Thursday, December the eighth. Minutes are in your packet. I move they be received and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Director Schools' report, Director Jeff Luttrell.
Thank you, Mayor. The Commissioners, you have my report also in your packet. Not a lot, going to go into a lot of detail. Still up on enrollment, it's holding up over seven hundred. Still over twenty thousand total enrollment for the district. We did have a meet and greet in December, thirty-one potential teachers were on hand and some of those have been, have been processed this month. So that was a good event. Show you how busy we have been, besides state testing in our high schools, you know, this time of year, we forget that a lot of times, very important month for our academic achievements. We measure to high school level, the state assessments. But we also, since December the second through the sixteenth, had twenty-two events at our schools. Horse events, band events, plays. I want to mention that just to highlight the fine arts program, what goes on in our schools. If you get a chance, I think you'd be very, very impressed with what goes on. But twenty-two of those events in just a little over fourteen days, there's been a lot going on. Construction projects, Stoner Creek is up, open, having school and it's wonderful. And of course, Wes Wilson is still, we do have some walls up and meeting this past week. Of course, the weather's happened this last couple of weeks, but, but they are moving forward with footers on that building. You're going to see that footprint come out of the ground here just as soon as the weather will allow it. We will be closed tomorrow afternoon as soon as that last child steps off that bus till January. But that is my report. Happy holidays to you. I encourage you to think about this time and share it with your families. Any questions, come.
Mr. Luttrell, second. I hear a second. Second. Commissioner Kurtz? In all seriousness, Mr. Lamont's looking to sell his property. And this, and I'm, and I would assume a school system could connect the sewer. It may be something to look at. There's sixty-eight there. You could put a high school, you could put a middle school and an elementary school. It may be something that your board may want to look at.
I will pass that information along to the board.
Commissioner Fields?
Yes, Director Luttrell, you mentioned some of the plays at the schools. I just happen to say that one of the plays were written by my granddaughter.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Hey, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Real quick, Director, I have the honor of being on the Education Committee now and thank you, your staff. I know that the other night, they talked about how you have a teacher stepping up and even driving buses, that means a lot to this commission. I want you to make sure you make up to your staff and we appreciate the help and we thank you for the dedication and setting up the play.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, and glad you brought that up. We have, going into great depths to handle the bus issue. We only had, out of two hundred routes down, out of two hundred routes, really four hundred, you think morning and afternoon, we had four down routes. And that today, that was this morning. And there has been a tremendous amount of work of combining routes, teachers driving buses, bus drivers driving double routes. So thank you for noticing and I'll be glad to pass that along.
Mr. Glover?
Just want to say prayers are, I know with the entire community, the young lady from Green Hills, also the teachers and the students and the community praying for her.
Thank you.
She was a, her mom's a teacher at the.
Walter J.
Yeah. Anything else? All, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Director Luttrell. Report from the Public Works Committee, Commissioner Weathers.
I have no report from Public Works at this time, but we will be meeting in January, so expect a call.
Thank you for that. Ag Center Management Committee, Commissioner Scruggs. Animal Control, Commissioner Breeze.
Animal Control met at five PM on Thursday, December eighth. Minutes are in your packet. I move they be received and filed.
I got a motion to hear a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Audit, Commissioner Glover.
No more.
Broad, broadband access, Commissioner Franklin.
No report.
Developing tourism, Mr. Clark.
No report.
Outstanding. Ethics, Commissioner Dow.
No report.
Finance, Commissioner Costley.
No report.
Health and Recreation, Commissioner Smith.
Hey, no report, but real quick, I'd like to also second what Ms. Weathers said. We will be meeting in January, so stay tuned to your emails and notifications, please.
Insurance, Commissioner McFarland.
No report.
Judicial, Commissioner Gentry.
Judicial Committee met twenty-eighth of November at five-thirty in the upstairs conference room. Your minutes on the package, I move that we receive and file them.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Planning zoning, Commissioner McFarland.
No report.
Rules, Commissioner Keith.
No report.
Urban type facility board, Commissioner Scruggs.
Urban type facility board, please. Any discussion?
Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Financial Director's report, Mr. Aaron Maynard. Doubt he has a Christmas joke for you tonight.
Main thing I want to say is Merry Christmas. I don't really have a great deal for you tonight. I will be doing a presentation next month. I will try to compress an hour presentation into thirty minutes. Probably yank some stuff out of it. So you did, basically, you had a loss of about thirteen and a half million the end of last month for year-to-date. It's now down to twelve, so you did pull in quite a bit of property tax and other revenue in the month of November. Of course, December's a big month. And for the first time, so your sales taxes is up seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand in Fund One Twenty-One, Special Purpose Tax Fund, year-over-year. So you're, you're up seven, seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand over what you were same year, same month, year-to-date last year. This is the first time, though, that we've had this particular trend in hotel motel tax and your general debt, not hotel motel, excuse me, I was looking at that as well. In adequate facilities tax, year-over-year, we are down in the general debt service fund of five hundred and eleven thousand. So again, I can kick back around at any time, but since that's been a topic of conversation lately, I thought I'd mention that. I don't want to be up here too long. Y'all have been here too long already. So unless y'all have any questions for me, that concludes my report.
Your smart [inaudible].
Yes, sir. November was the first month. It's right at a few hundred thousand more than it was in November the previous year.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Father. Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Report from Budget Committee, Commissioner Marlowe.
Budget Committee met Thursday, December the eighth. Minutes are in your packet. Move they be received and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Resolutions, Commissioner Marlowe.
Resolution twenty-two, twelve, three, to reflect revenues received but not included in the original budget and to amend the budget and appropriation resolution to make an additional appropriation into county clerk.
No votes approved.
Got a motion, a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-three and two, resolution passes.
Resolution twenty-two dash twelve dash four, to amend the budget and appropriation resolution for line item transfers in the budget court.
Resolution approved.
I got a motion and a second. Discussion now. Are you ready to vote?
No.
Please cast your vote.
Chairman.
All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-three and two, resolution passes.
Resolution twenty-two dash twelve dash five, to amend the budget and appropriation resolution by approving Wilson County Board of Education Budget Amendment twenty-twenty-three dash oh-five.
Motion to approve.
And a second. Got a motion, a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Mr. Fields? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-three and two, resolution passes.
Resolution twenty-two dash twelve dash six, authorizing the allocation of the remaining bu, fund, I'll get it right in a minute, remaining bond funds from the Green Hill High School Bond Resolution.
Got a motion, a second. Discussion now. Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Mr. Franklin? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-three and two, resolution passes.
Like to wish everybody a.
Motion to suspend the rules?
New year.
No, 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 no. Hang on one second, hang on one second. I got a motion, suspend the rules, please.
No move.
A second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Now we got to do a GIS.
Yeah, we, we created [inaudible] several years ago, GIS to assist in planning and all of that. I know it's been part of the [inaudible] organization, but Sarah [inaudible] called me twice and said, they found the resolution, there's no history that we ever approved and [inaudible] the county [inaudible]. Since we've been operating, I thought it's several years, [inaudible].
Well, I think they were like, you, you played a shit with it.
And it really wasn't approved.
Have a motion?
She's asking.
Yeah, so a motion to approve that we go from, how many members to how many members?
Well, I think, I think you said from eleven to thirteen.
Yes, from eleven to thirteen is correct. So asking to move the, we already have been working under this rule that we have thirteen members in the GIS committee, but when we talked about it a while back, but we never brought actually a resolution to you guys, so what we're asking to do is just kind of catch up with our paperwork. So if I can get a motion from you to move the numbers of the members of the GIS committee from eleven to thirteen, that would be great.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion on that? And the number on that is?
Twenty-two dash twelve dash seven.
Dash seven. Any discussion, father? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you for that.